Good evening. This is the caucus meeting for June 11th, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience. Notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and posted on the voting board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers. City Hall, 260 High Street, at 5:30 PM. Right now it's five, almost 5:45, running a little late. And the city council meeting will follow the caucus and the closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices, so you need to make a telephone call. Please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice, so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Morales.
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta.
Present.
Councilman Puccio.
Present.
Council President Tejeda.
Present. Ordinance, public hearing, five minimums, maximum per speaker, per ordinance. An ordinance, number one, ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 Redevelopment Plan, Area One, the gateway pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 Redevelopment Plan, Area Two, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Council President.
Yes.
When we get to the voting session, I'm going to recommend the council carry number two to the August 20th meeting.
The date, yeah.
Only number two.
It's only one meeting, yeah.
Two and six.
Two and six. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about addition. Number four, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, garbage, rubbish, and refuse, adopted February 18, 1975, ordinance number 6475 as amended, also known as Chapter 243 of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. Number five, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy authorizing terminating the amended services agreement with Raritan Bay Area Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, and in lieu thereof, enter into a lease agreement commencing upon the effective date and continue thereafter for a period of 10 years for non-monetary consideration pursuant to NJSA 48, Column 12-14, to be used for a public purpose. And I think, Steve Jovan has a presentation for us?
That's a whole man.
I am here to discuss a little bit about the management agreement that was entered with the Raritan Bay Area YMCA.
Is that microphone on?
Yeah, it's fine.
It doesn't sound, okay.
To discuss the management agreement that was signed with the Raritan Bay YMCA back in December of 2009, well, that was the effective date. I know there has been much discussing about the original agreement, going dating back all the way back to 2008, 2009. At that time, I believe that the Diaz administration wasn't in agreement into the structure of the, of how the agreement was formed, and there was many efforts into trying to renegotiate or change the terms of the agreement. In speaking to the administration, it was felt that we've exhausted all of our resources in trying to, going back to what that agreement was, and we kind of felt that it was best just to sunset that agreement and move forward. One of the things that I would like to say, we started these conversations back in January of 2024, so this has been almost a year and a half conversation and discussions and review by both the administration of the city and the administration of the YMCA. I think we've come to an agreement where it's mutually beneficial for both parties. Currently, the YMCA pays the city, I gotta find, $9,700 per month, and honestly, the operations of that building far exceeds that, and the city pays for many of the services that, or the repairs and utilities that go on in that building. In speaking to the CEO of the organization, Steve Jovan, we kind of felt that we needed to change this management agreement into a more traditional lease agreement, being that they're the ones that operate 95% of the programming out of the building. This agreement was reviewed by the administration, by our Public Works Department, who does all the repairs, our insurance representatives, the city attorney, so it has been vetted quite a bit over the last year or so. What are the benefits now with this new agreement with the city? There's going to be less of a responsibility for maintenance of many of the items that our Public Works employees have to take care of today, both the manpower and the cost, the actual cost of replacing broken or worn equipment and things of that nature. The city's going to get more usage out of the building. We have agreed that there'll be periods of time throughout the year that the city, the Recreation Department, and other departments will have use of the building, have access to the building, in the off-hours that the YMCA is not operating, and we've discussed about doing more partnerships together, bringing more activity and bringing more collaboration to serve more residents of our city. Another thing is, I think what's key to us, is an increased payment to the city. The payment now is $9,700, and it's going to increase to $17,500 per month. And I provided you a short info page that was prepared by Steve Jovan to kind of delineate what that looks like. One of the other benefits is that we're going to get $1 million in capital improvements. This building is 15 to 16 years old now. As with any facility, things start to wear, and big dollars have to be spent on certain areas of the building. The YMCA has committed to provide $1 million towards that effort, and that'll be in coordination with the YMCA. So, we're not going to make changes without them knowing, they're not going to make changes without us knowing, right? We're going to work hand in hand. We currently have a facilities manager there that oversees the operation of the YMCA, the Police Department, and the Fire Department, so that'll still be in place, that person will still be at their disposal and also at our disposal. And I think that we believe, as the city administration, we have a strong strategic partner at the other side. We definitely could have looked outside of the city for a third-party private entity or nonprofit entity to operate this building, but I think that we've made this relationship where the Raritan Bay YMCA is a very trusted partner, not only with respects to the building, there are many other services that I'm sure Steve will highlight when he comes up later, that we rely on the YMCA and they rely on us. So, you know, that partnership is critical for the city, because honestly, in this current climate of costs increasing overall, they're coming in and helping relieve some of our responsibilities, and you know, it's welcome, because it doesn't really take, it doesn't hurt the taxpayer, right? It doesn't like, you know, it's not, it's not a burden on the taxpayer. The YMCA board is mostly volunteers, right? And we welcome this partnership, and I think that going forward, the city's going to see great benefit, and we provided the information for you. If you have any questions, I would like Steve Jovan to come up to discuss a little bit from the YMCA's point of view.
Most of us, and I think all of us, got a presentation from, private presentation for this, and I think we welcome the new changes on this contract. It will be a great coalition to continue working together and making a better agreement than what we had in the past, and we welcome this.
Sure. Is it okay if Mr. Jovan comes up and says a few words?
Unless someone has any more questions. Do you have any questions?
No. I just had a comment. I also would like to echo that, that I do agree that there's a lot of benefits to this specific changes, but I think most importantly, I do appreciate the recreation aspect of it, especially with the teen nights on Saturdays. I know that the B3 program, the recreation also does have its separate programs for whether it's tutoring or support, so I do think that continuing those services and having even more access to support the city is something that I do look forward to for the YMCA and the recreation. The YMCA was one of my first jobs, other than McDonald's, as a kid, and a lot of my parents, I do recommend them with the B3 program for all those supports, so I'm very grateful for the partnership with both the city, of course, but especially the recreation and the Y.
And I appreciate those comments, and you know, it goes outside of that. You know, when I was Director of Human Services, we engaged the YMCA to operate our Code Blue Shelter Program. At that time, it was totally run by the Rec Department. We had part-time rec staff that would work till 8 o'clock at night, come back at 10 o'clock at night, and stay over till 6:00 in the morning. And ideally, that's not their responsibility or their jobs, but they did it because they wanted to see, you know, that these individuals got, they were taken care of. When we engaged the YMCA about it, they were very open to us in doing it, and today we have a collaboration where there's probably 60 or 70 nights that we run Code Blue, and the YMCA is doing it. When we're in need of a relocation and there's no hotels available, it's a quick phone call to either Steve Jovan or somebody else at the YMCA, can you find us a hotel room? We need to use your, you know, your access to hotel rooms. That happens all the time. So, it could be something, short-term housing, or some long-term housing. You know, there's many things that the YMCA does as a partner with the city that we actually can't always do, but they're able to do, and they're open to helping. So, I just think it just makes sense to go into this agreement with the YMCA.
It's just working together for this community.
Yes.
I don't have any questions either, but I do have just a comment that, you know, I do commend you guys to be able to collaborate and work together for the benefit of the community. The YMCA does provide a lot of services, great programs and services for the community, so it's a good decision.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
I'd just like to end this. I want to personally thank Steve Jovan. Now, Steve and I have spent many hours, like, going over this agreement and going back and forth. I must say, he never bought lunch once.
Oh, he's overdue.
Which, you know, I'm going to take up with him, yes. But if you take a look at the YMCA board, they're all people that contributed to this incredible community, and they're continuing to do that, so I'd like to thank the board as well, and the council for, you know, coming together and agreeing to this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, come on.
I thought I was going to add that.
No. You have to buy lunch now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We met there by the waterfront, I think it was on my blog, or something like that. So, good evening, council members, council president. Thank you for having me. Mr. O'Keal, welcome to Perthamboy. City Clerk Kutch, and Mr. Opel, thanks again for your time and your efforts in this. I'm going to go into a little quick story. It's only one page, I promise I'll be quick.
It's okay.
But on Sunday, September 15th, 1867, the pastors of the Protestant Church in Perthamboy invited the men of Perthamboy to meet the following Monday in the Baptist church. The purpose was to organize the Perthamboy YMCA. This is a manuscript that I brought, I'd be glad to pass around, just be gentle. It's what they call onion paper for those in my generation, and it's hand-typed, and this manuscript is our Y's history. It's typed and bound by the former Superintendent of Schools, William C. McGinnis, the namesake of McGinnis School. So, I will pass that around, and actually, I just read from that page. So, furthermore, I have the time capsule. This time capsule was inserted into the building cornerstone on the old Y on Jefferson Street. It was rescued from the fire in 1997. Its 2012 contents include a copy of the Perthamboy Evening News from that day, several coins from that year, and a damaged and frail Holy Bible. Today, we add to that history. Today marks another great milestone for both the city and the YMCA. Our collaboration has not always been easy, kind of like marriage. So, yet it stands as a model of how to leverage strengths in the best interest of the residents we both care and serve for. I come before you today representing 22 Board of Volunteers. Many of them are here today. If I could ask them to stand, to be acknowledged.
Wow.
So, thank you for coming. I also represent 200 caring and committed YMCA staff, several are here this evening as well, and they've been working all day, so I'm just going to give them a break. And we have over 7,000 current members, and I am proud to represent them here tonight. I also stand, or sit here today, as a proud resident of the city. On the slides you can see above, you can witness our collective impact. Our collaboration extends far beyond the lease being considered tonight. Our partnership helps to end homelessness in our city, it improves housing conditions through fire safety grants, it engages and uplifts senior citizens struggling with social isolation, develops housing policy to combat unsafe, unhealthy living situations, case-manages the housing vulnerable, and distributes temporary rental assistance. We fight food insecurity by building trust through our food pantry, create affordable supportive housing, work together to offer water safety education and free swim lessons. We coordinate teen nights to provide safe space on Saturday nights in the winter and collaborate for Code Blue more than 400 nights in the past five years. We proudly partner with a multitude of nonprofits, ministries, medical providers, and government agencies, including nearly every single city department. These vital partnerships are not part of the lease. There is nowhere in writing that it's required under some written rules that we have to do that. These are deeply intertwined, these principles are deeply entwined with our collective aspiration to create a city where everyone is supported and valued. We are honored, honored to be a trusted voice and humbled to be a partner with you, and quite honestly, we're honored to work together for a better us, and I want to thank you for your time and efforts on this. And quite honestly, I couldn't, I couldn't stand up without just thanking my board, our employees, and also, really, the relationship I have with Kenny goes back a long time, from when he was with the Board of Ed, years and years ago, and he's a good friend, and he's a good man, he's a good father, and I really truly respect his efforts in working together to make this happen. And I also want to commend the mayor's leadership in this as well. It's really been something that I know between him and my board chair, Lou Simonsky, they've really, they tasked us with bringing this to the council, so I want to thank them for their leadership. So, thank you.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate and thank your board, because without their okay, this wouldn't have happened. Also, the administration for the work and everything that happened between, closed-door between you two, making it happen, so I'm glad that this finally is coming to an end. Tonight, we'll be voting for it, and I'm very proud to be part of this history-making for Perthamboy.
Yeah, and just as a technicality or technical component, our board is meeting tomorrow at 12 noon to also have a similar discussion and similar meeting about the agreement, to support the agreement as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody want to see what's in the box?
Yes.
Actually, yes. I was wondering what that was.
Show and tell.
Let's see. Wow.
So, this is the, it looks like it was from, and obviously was hot in the fire, and then they, that's what they ended up bringing to Smith Street days after that.
So, this is the newspaper?
Ken, you're not in the newspaper.
Are you trying to call him old? Has his birthday just passed?
Seems like it happens twice a year.
I think time capsules are great.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, while you continue seeing that. Okay, so, number six, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending Section 430 zoning and land development, adopted September 21st, 1993, as ordinance number 68-93, and as amended to provide for additional definitions and conditional uses, and also amending Chapter 137, alcoholic beverages, adopted September 6, 1950, as amended to provide for additional related regulation. And this is the other one that we're going to carry until August. Okay, agenda, public comment. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Bid, bids were received on May 22nd, 2025, for the following, cleaning and CCTV inspection of the West Interceptor Sewer Main Project. Vortex services, $97,673.50. B, National Water Main Cleaning Corporation, $111,125. Montana Construction Corporation, Inc., $188,950. The recommended of the bid was vortex services. Reports, Jill A. Goldie, CFO, Controller, submitted the following. Report of sale of $12,545,000, general obligation refunding bonds. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about addition and deletions. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with BP, Perthamboy Third, New Jersey, Urban Renewal LLC. Number three, ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with IV5, Raritan River Logistics Center Urban Renewal LLC. Number four, ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Marmot, Perthamboy Urban Renewal LLC.
Council President, that one, we're going to remove as well, the last.
Number four?
It's not ready.
To August also? Or you don't know?
I don't know, so we'll just.
I have a quick question. Mr. Opel, can you just go over two and three, just in case the public doesn't have the backup, just the address sites and quick overview, please, for the tax exemptions?
Number two, BP, Perthamboy Three, Urban Renewal LLC, that's for the site at Herbert Street. It's, initially, it was Veridian Partners who were the developers there, they transferred their interest to Bridge. The council will recall, the city is actually a party to this agreement as well, to the initial development agreement. That's the site where, it's an old contaminated parcel of land that Bridge will now construct on one portion of it, warehouse, and then on the, after subdividing, there'll be two other portions, nine acres on River View, and then nine acres on Herbert Street. Those will be turned, after they're remediated, those will be turned over to the city. The parcel on the River View side will be passive recreation, and then the nine acres on Herbert Street will be, to be determined for the city's use at some point in the future, but after all of the remediation, the city winds up with 18 out of the 27 acres of the total site. The financial agreement just pertains to the warehouse that's going to be constructed on the middle portion of the site. And just with regard to the terms of the agreement, right now, the current taxes are about $263,000 a year, of which the city retains $156,800. With a pilot agreement in place, the amount will jump to, in the first year, $1,295,000, and the city will retain $1,185,000 of that. So, there's a difference of $1 million in revenue to the city. That's the first year. Over the course of the 30-year term, the taxes, regular, you know, current taxes would be about $6,300,000, the city share, and over the 30-year term, the city share of the service charges will be about $64 million over the 30-year period, so also a significant difference there. With regard to the IV5, Raritan River Logistics Site, that is Tank Farm, currently, it's been purchased, another industrial use. They're proposing a million-square-foot warehouse and distribution facility on this With regard to the, you know, the basis for the deal, the current taxes are approximately $370,000, of which the city retains $220,000. In the first year of the pilot, the pilot amount will be approximately $1,277,000, of which the city would retain $869,000 about.
Can you repeat the address?
Yeah, that is 577 Smith Street.
Is that the Buckeye?
And then, you know, over the 30 years of the agreement, if it was just, you know, based on the current taxes, over 30 years, the city would get about $9 million in taxes. With the pilot, the city share would be a little over $44 million over that period, so another significant difference of about $35 million over the 30 years, based on current taxes versus what was negotiated for the pilot payments, so.
Thank you.
Those are the terms. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
And the other one, the reason we pulled the other one, it's required that the developer submits an application as, you know, in order to request the tax exemption from the city. They have not provided that. I spoke to their attorney today, they were still, the company was, you know, no other problem, other than that they're busy and they haven't been able to finalize their application, so when they're able to finalize it, we'll present that to the council for your consideration.
Which properties is this?
That's the last one.
Yeah, which location?
The last one?
Yeah.
The one that we're pulling? That's 599 Faya, that's the current DPW site.
Resolutions, R248-625, authorizing settlement of the workers' compensation litigation entitled, Elio Carrasco versus... litigation entitled Elio Carrasco versus City of Perth Amboy CP number twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, nine, 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 for the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars. R two forty-nine, six twenty-five, authorizing submission of an application of, to the New Jersey Department of Environment Protection NJDEP, Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund for the, for funding for the assessment and investigation of four hundred Laurie Street, Perth Amboy, New Jersey, in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. R two fifty-six, twenty-five, authorizing the City of Perth Amboy Fire Department to submit an application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, DHS, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Fire Prevention and Safety FPNS Grant Program. R two fifty-one, six twenty-five, authorizing the purchase of electricity supply services for public use in, on, an online auction website. R two fifty-two, six twenty-five, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Jewish Renaissance Foundation JRF and the City of Perth Amboy for the administration of, uh, twenty twenty-five Emerging Leaders Summer Institute in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. R two fifty-three, six twenty-five, authorizing a contract with Michael Calafari Architect LLC for professional services, Perth Amboy City Hall Preservation Plan, and updating the national registration nomination in the amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars. R two fifty-four, six twenty-five, accepting the bid and awarding a contract for the cleaning and CCTV inspection of the West Interceptor Sewer Main Project to Vortex Services in an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars with fifty cents. R two fifty-five, six twenty-five, authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for professional engineering services to CDM Smith for running WTP Improvement Amendment for aater replacement project in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. R two fifty-six, six twenty-five, authorizing up to sixty days of paid injury leave for police officer Gregory Cruz through August twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. R two fifty-seven, six twenty-five, there's a title there. Authorizing acceptance of an award from the New Jersey Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Grant Program fiscal year twenty-five in the amount of five hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. R two fifty-eight, six twenty-five, authorizing the person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption license twelve sixteen dash thirty-two dash zero forty-three dash zero zero six, held in the name of Radus, Inc., TA Ali's Liquor Warehouse at six forty-two State Street to DNJ Liquor Store, Inc., TA Ali's Liquor Warehouse effective June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Excuse me, Council President, we have, uh, two add-ons.
Yeah, two add-ons. So that will be R two fifty-nine.
We'll need to discuss those in closed session. They're, um, they're for two, they're two chapter one fifty-nines, for to insert, uh, grant funds into the budget.
Okay, and R two sixty? Six twenty-five, okay, so the first one is R two fifty-nine, six twenty-five, resolution authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to NJA SA forty-eight, column four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL nineteen forty-eight for the E Port Two Open Space Contribution in the amount of one million dollars. That's, uh, now, R two sixty-six, twenty-five, resolution authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL nineteen forty-eight for the NJDEP Veterans' Memorial Park Grant in the amount of two million dollars. So those are the two add-ons. Okay, we have some communication during this time. And we have a closed session resolution, R two forty-seven, six twenty-five, authorizing a closed session at the June, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting to discuss the following. Number one, workers' compensation, Elio Carrasco versus City of Perth Amboy. And number two, contract negotiation. Anything else that anybody wants to add? No, I need a motion.
Move. Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, public portion, five minutes maximum per speakers. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? See, anybody who wants to come to the mic, tell your name, your address, and then speak on them.
Good evening, my name is Nolly Sorano. I'm here representing my mother and my father, Edith and Kalista Sorano. We live.
Get the mic closer.
It's, I don't think it's on. Is it on?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
We can hear.
We are having an issue with the property owner, uh, next to three twenty-one Stockton Street, which is right across, right next to the Fatima Church, which is the greenhouse right in, right next to the Fatima Church. That used to be a, um, old railroad. Okay, uh, my parents bought, purchased the house thirty-five years ago. Here, and there, what they purchased here, it shows that they are, they are, they purchased the three or four feet.
Get close to the mic because, uh.
They purchased the three or four feet that are next to the house. So it's like a, a triangle, correct? So the property owner took it upon himself to take those three or four feet. But little did we know that the city approved two houses that actually takes those three or four feet from my mother. So I wanna know who's, where, where is the plant, what did they purchase? If they purchased this thirty-five years ago and the, um, inspector is telling me that they resurveyed the property, the land, they recertified, they redid it about two thousand and six, I don't know when it was, about that time, from when they purchased the house, those three or four feet were no longer there. So who, I, I asked him personally, I said, so who was the city to take away those three or four feet from my parents? Cause it's not making any sense to me. So that's the problem we're having now. This, this man has taken the three or four feet because he put a fence up years ago. And he said, oh, Mr. Sorano, don't worry, we're gonna fix up the fence, it's gonna be a nice fence. So he put up the fence. First of all, he took down the fence that my father put, didn't ask any permission, just went ahead and took off the fence. When he took off the fence, he surveyed the land then. And if you look in these pictures, when he surveyed the land the last time, he's taking those three or four feet from my parents. But little did I know, like I said, they approved two houses for him. Here, you can tell the three or four feet from the tree. And here, they have, they're totally cut off from the backyard and the side of the house, which is not safe. Because if God forbid, there's a fire, and there's a fire on one side, where's my parents gonna come out on the other side? So he totally cut them off. So I wanna know how, what justice can be served here? Because if my parents purchased something and you're telling me that they've resurveyed, they're, redid the land, they surveyed, they're surveyed it again, and you're telling me that those three or four feet are no longer there? So I would like to know, what did they purchase? And how many taxes are you, are they paying for what land? Cause it makes no sense to me. Okay?
Mr. Akil will speak to you?
Yes.
And then he will take it from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
How many see me?
Okay, you too. Anybody else?
Vince Macule, two fifteen, Sheridan Street. I'd like to comment on the, uh, the YMCA Termination Amendment Service Agreement. I'm a, a member, I benefited, took some refuge after Hurricane Sandy. I find that the YMCA has served the community for many, many years. It's one of the best projects I probably, in recent history. That's not really my concern at this time. I'm also concerned with having the utilization in this amended service agreement, you're leasing it out in a new agreement. I think the city would also benefit, and this, I understand that the YMCA contributes to this community in terms of healthcare services, food services, homeless services, there's no question about that. But I believe to invest some of that money, some of those resources that the city has through either taxes, lea, the leasing, or the payment, you're, I don't know, you're talking about a capital improvement, towards other facilities within this town. On Smith Street alone, there's three large properties that are, have been, and one recently, Rite Aid is going to be deserted. So I saying this because of this. And I talking on behalf of myself. At that particular hospital, there are almost fifty percent of the patients, inpatients, that their healthcare is going to be threatened coming up in the federal legislation in the U.S. Congress. So what, I am one during that same period of Hurricane Sandy that had to go through a process of Medicare. And I wanna talk loud, and I appreciate you listening. So during that process to certify, as they're talking now, that you have to have eighty hours of work history to qualify for Medicaid. I think that's an abomination. Donald Trump was serviced at the, uh, the Reed Hospital, the military hospital in, in Maryland. His life was saved. The lives of anybody that comes into our hospital has another right to be saved as well. When I went through that Medicaid certification, the documentation was thorough. It felt at times you're almost in a prison type of, of a situation. So what I'm asking again, you need, whether it's the YMCA, another facility, to provide where people are going to certify for their Medicare or Medicaid coverage. It shouldn't be that you don't deserve Medicare, or you don't deserve Medicaid. It should be that a hospital and doctors exist to help people and to save lives. And I'll end by this, please provide, as I'm saying, other facilities. Olive Street is an old building. It cannot be used for all these services. The YMCA is meant for recreation mainly, but they've assumed other responsibilities. And I know some of the people that you helped on Smith Street, there's no question of that. But you need other investing in other properties in order to service people adequately. You have not done that, and you have large corporations, Home Depot, as well as you have on tonight's, uh, agenda, BP looking for a tax exemption. So if they're so wealthy and they have so much resources, and Kushner has so much resources, why can't they invest in making sure our hospital is gonna function in the future?
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, we'll be going to, um, closed session. When we come back from closed session, we'll be having the city council meeting. We're back from closed session, I need a motion to, uh, adjourn. Oh, resume, resume the caucus meeting. We have to resume first. I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, now I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, we're ready for round two. Okay. Good evening, this is the city council meeting for June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Presiding Officer of the Council, Melody Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience, the notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted in the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the ca, council chamber, City Hall, two sixty High Street, right after the caucus and the closed session. Right now is six forty-seven. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body, provide us with the wisdom and the understanding of what is needed in our community and our, our city. Um, protect our troops wherever they are abroad or in this country, protecting our freedom, their family and their, and their communities. And with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with love and change and justice. Okay, ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speakers, per ordinance. Number one, ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, approving certain amendments to the focus twenty twenty redevelopment plan area one, the gateway pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. I need a motion to op, open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, the ordinance, um, of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, approving certain amendments to the focus twenty twenty redevelopment plan area two, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. It will be, um, the public hearing will be on the August meeting.
August thirteenth.
August thirteen, meeting. Okay.
Count, can we, um,
Oh, we have.
Move to carry it to.
Oh, we have. I need a motion to move it to August meeting. August thirteen, meeting.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta? Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, county of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. And this is about addition, I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number four, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, county of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled garbage, garbage, rubbish, and refuse, adopted February 18, 1975, ordinance number 64-75, as amended, also known as Chapter 243 seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Open to the public, seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number five, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, authorizing terminating the amended services agreement with Robertson Bay Area Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, and in lieu thereof, enter into a lease agreement commencing upon the effective date and continue thereafter for a period of 10 years for non-monetary consideration pursuant to NJSA 48, column 12-14, to be used for public purpose. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Anybody seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against?
Council President, we adopted, I just want to note that there's going to be one correction, it's not a 10-year lease.
It's not a 10-year?
Yeah, that was a typo.
I thought it was a 10.
No, it's, it's longer than that.
For the Y?
Oh, 25? 25, okay, that's a correction, is the period is 25 years for a non-monetary consideration pursuant to NJSA 48, to be used for a public portion. Okay, with that correction, and then, nobody came up. So now we need to, a motion to adopt?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Council President, uh, Councilman Puccio, sorry.
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed that one.
All right. Number six is back on, we mentioned that we were going to carry it to August, but Mr. Oppo just informed me that, that it's ready to go. So, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, county of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending Section 430 zoning and land development, adopted September 21st, 1993, as an ordinance number 68-93, and, and as amended, to provide for additional definitions and conditional uses, and also amending Chapter 137 alcoholic beverages, adopted September 6, 1950, as amended, to provide for additional related regulation. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion?
No, first, we close the public hearing. I need a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion first.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes, okay. Agenda, public comment, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? It's open to the public, on anything on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, bids, bids were received on May 22nd, 2025, for the following. Number one, cleaning and CCTV inspection of the West Interceptor Sewer Main Project. We got three, three bids, three response. The first one is Vortex Services, $97,673.50, which was the recommendation. B, National Water Main Cleaning Corporation, $111,125. Okay. Montana Construction Corporation, Inc., $188,950. Reports, Jill A. Goldie CFO Controller submitted the following. Number one, report of sale of $12,545,000 general obligation refunding bonds. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, county of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped person, ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. This is about addition and deletion. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, county of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exception, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with BP Perth Amboy Third, New Jersey Urban Renewal LLC. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, county of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with IVV5, Robertson River Logistics Center Urban Renewal LLC. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number four was pulled at the caucus meeting. Okay, now look at the resolution, including the two arants. And if you want to pull anything to be separate? You're good?
No, I'm good.
Good.
Okay. You're good?
Yep.
Okay. The consent agenda will be R. 248, 623 through R. 266... 625, I'm sorry. Okay, again, consent agenda is R. 248, 625 through R. 266, 25. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, we had the closed session, and public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I want, I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, this is on any item.
Good evening, council. I, Vincent Maciel, 215 Sheridan Street. I'd like to make two comments. One is, given the, the extreme news that is part of our experience in the United States, and we, that's where we live, I think, I would just express, and I don't have any background information, that our police department within this town should not cooperate in any way with the enforcement ICE. And that's my personal opinion, that our residents should be protected by our local police, and any crimes within Perth Amboy, thefts, robberies, any kind of physical altercations, should be dealt with by our police. And we should not use our resources for things as going after immigrants strictly on their immigrant status. I believe that. And I don't know exactly how Perth Amboy is doing that, but you should agree with the Immigrant Trust Act at the state legislator offices, our legislators have this within their power to approve this. And that would be a mechanism, as we see what is happening in our country, to safeguard and to communicate clearly that this is not, should not be part of our country. Second, I have distributed numerous times, at least twice, to the council, rent leveling board documentation on fair decontrol programs that the city of New Brunswick has to deal with extravagant prices that landlords are providing. They have stresses in terms of their maintenance, in terms of the rising water bills. There is no question that these are part of our city. But for residents that are somewhat in area of 20-some or $30,000 income, and many lower than that, to continue to get rent increases on an astronomical level isn't, is something that the city council should be dealing with along with the mayor's office. So please, look at anything that the rent leveling board provides, and do the best you can in dealing what, what the city of Perth Amboy needs. But please, have the people of New Brunswick, the administrators, or somebody who has a down-to-earth, a financial understanding of how it's worked and how it's not worked, and go about something better for Perth Amboy. Because right now, you're allowing a, anything goes in terms of rents in our city. And it simply is not justified. It's justifying the bank mortgage, or some kind of other reason why somebody would do that. But I appreciate that, and please understand, I am talking publicly, and I think we should be allowed to loudly talk about these things publicly. One reason is, there's been meetings you can't even be heard by this microphone. So thank you for listening.
Okay, and on that subject, I think we have, we do have an ordinance that talks about the, the raising of, of rent. But I think the tenant also have to report that if that is happening to them, to, I guess, the rent leveling board, or to the police if they feel that they're being not following. There's no, I don't think the administration will have a way of knowing when they're doing this unless the tenant speak up and come to, in front of one of the boards. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, council comments? Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, everyone, and I want to wish our council member, Mr. Puccio, a happy birthday, and happy Father's Day as well to all the fathers that are here. Wishing you a very successful weekend, and I hope you get all that you want, and a lot of food and breakfast. And as echoed earlier with the YMCA contract and negotiation, a win-win is never easy. But as mentioned with the administration, with the Recreation Department, as well as the YMCA Board and employees, this is a great progress, and teamwork is always great. And I am proud to continue serving the YMCA, and seeing all the benefits that they have to our youth and our community. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morales?
Happy birthday as well, Councilman Puccio. You're, you're not as old as, you know, these people are saying. And, and I believe it because you ran, you ran, I mean, no, you rode the bike all the way to Washington, DC. And I'm, I'm younger, and I don't know if I could do that. So I, I really, you know, give you props for that. Just want to say, we're, nothing really much to say tonight, except that we're finally getting some nice weather. So enjoy a lot of the events. I know, I was looking at the events that were coming up in, here in June, and we do have plenty of events coming up here within the city. So enjoy yourselves, be safe, and happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Thank you.
Council President, can I mention one more thing? I'm sorry. And then I just also want to congratulate the board for a successful Puerto Rican festival. It was very safe, it was well put together, the board did amazing, the sponsors, the employees, and of course, our police officers and security. I did not want to forget that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes. Again, happy birthday, Mr. Puccio.
It's your, it's your night.
Yes, it is your night. We almost share birthdays here. So happy birthday again, I hope you have a beautiful and blessed birthday, and that you enjoy the beautiful weather. And I just wanted to say that sitting up here and working at different levels, you know, from my day job to this job, it's amazing to see everything that everyone does. You know, I work with Kenny on, on to another level, and same with Steve. And I know they wear many hats, and they do so much for the city. So it's nice to see them working together, you know, to make this work for both the city and the YMCA. They do have a lot of events and a lot of activities that they do for the, not just the children, but everyone in the community. And on that note, they do have a lot of things coming up, like the movie nights and all that stuff. So please take advantage, there's a lot of free things that go on in the city for our residents, so I do hope that you take advantage of it, because they do work very hard to put these things together, and to collaborate, and just make sure that it's a fun time, regardless of the event. So again, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all that you do, and all the work that you put into settling this. And happy Father's Day to all the fathers, even those that are raising children. You know, it is a hard task, being a mother myself, so I commend you and enjoy your day.
Thank you. Councilman Puccio? The man of the hour, of the day.
That's why I got dressed up tonight, by the way. First of all, thank you, Councilwoman Cruz, Councilwoman Morales, Council President Tejada, and Councilwoman Peralta. And, you know, and I know I talk a lot about, you know, what I went through... And, you know, and I know I talk a lot about, you know, what I went through to get to this point. And, you know, now that I've reached another milestone, I'm forever grateful to the doctors and the staff at Memorial Sloan Kettering for having me be able to sit here and say that I am an official five-year cancer survivor. It's because of their expertise that I'm here. Along with a good friend of mine, Iris, who's out in the audience. We both benefited from their expertise.
Yes, yes. Oh, and don't forget.
Oh, Carolyn!
Carolyn!
Sorry, Carolyn. But, and again, and, you know, and a shout out to the city clerk, our BA, who I have to say is, I can't say enough about him other than I'm grateful for the cake that you sent me yesterday. I mean, but other than that, I mean, thank, thank you. Thank you for what you do for us. With that said, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanna say, have a pleasant evening. Is being, enjoy the weather out there. I also want to congratulate the Comité Patriótico Puerto Rican for their event. I couldn't attend because I had so much going on, but I saw pictures and videos, and I was so hurt that I couldn't see Ol Gatañón, because she's my favorite, and, but I couldn't attend. But I, I'm glad that everything went peaceful and everything. They have, they had a nice three-day weekend. I also wanna say happy Father's Day to all the fathers. They always complain that they don't get enough acknowledgement, but I do feel that being a father is, nobody can replace that. Sometimes when people mention that you have been a mother and a father, I think that's not fair, because I think fathers, nobody replace that. Like, nobody can replace a mother, nobody can replace a father. The love of father or the connection between a child and their father is very special. So with that, I already said too many times, happy birthday, Mr. Puccio, and we appreciate you, and especially myself, I appreciate you a lot. We've been together for a while. So have a good night, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Okay, good night, everybody.